Ready whenever you say so.
All right, I think we're ready on our end.
Very good, let's do it. I'd like to call the Planning Commission of April 13th, 2021 to order. This is Mark Kogler, chairperson. And we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like to ask Commissioner Davis if you'd be kind enough to lead us. And I would ask that everybody else please mute your microphones during the pledge.
I'd be honored to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, before, could you read the teleconference notice, please?
Yes, thank you, I'm remiss in doing my duty in that regard. We do have a notification at the beginning of each meeting that contains some information and a disclaimer. And it's on the agenda, but it reads as follows. Please note that due to COVID-19 emergency and in compliance with state and county sheltered home orders, and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Planning Commission meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. A video stream of the Planning Commission meeting presentations will be livestreamed and available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: www.prcity.com/youtube. Rather than attending in person, project applicants and members of the public must call 805-865-7276 to participate via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting at 6:30. Or written public comments can be submitted via email to planning@prcity.com. Written comments received prior to 12 noon on the day of the meeting will be posted as an addendum to the agenda online That's the number five. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item. And with that out of the way, roll call would now be appropriate.
Commissioner Cobar Rubius.
Present.
Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gibson.
Present.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Jorgensen. Commissioner Kogler.
Present.
And Commissioner Jorgensen had notified us that she would be unavailable for this meeting tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll have staff introductions, please.
Yes, Warren Fraz, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Darcy Delgado, our associate planner. Jessica Ferguson and Ashley Peterson are here, providing IT support for the meeting. And then the city engineer, Dave Athie, is on the line as well.
Very good, thank you. Item E on our agenda is general public comments regarding matters not on the agenda. Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to that item?
One moment while we check the log.
No, sir, we don't have any callers.
Okay, thank you. Item F is agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled. Do we have any of those?
There are none.
Seeing that, we will move into item G, which is the public hearings portion of the meeting. We do have one public hearing tonight. It's the General Plan Annual Report 2020. The commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the City Council regarding the 2020 annual report on the implementation of the general plan. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, so good evening, Chairman Kogler and members of the commission. This is Darcy Delgado, and I'll be giving the staff presentation for the 2020 annual report on the general plan. As you may recall from years past, this is a requirement of the state to report on the status of implementing the city's general plan. The status report is first considered by the Planning Commission. And so tonight you are being asked to make a recommendation to the City Council. And we're actually going to City Council next Tuesday, April 20th, with this report and any recommendations that you have. Finally, a follow-up report will be provided to the state after the City Council reviews the report. And I will note that a partial report was also submitted to the state earlier this month, and that was pertaining to the city's housing production. The general plan status report is broken into two sections. So the first section is more or less a thumbnail analysis of where we're at with the general plan elements and all of the different policies it contains. The second part is a more detailed report on the status of the housing element. And then also, our report does briefly mention the status on where we're at with implementation of the Uptown Town Center specific plan. As part of the process on reporting the general plan, all of the city departments were involved in updating the status action items that pertain to their particular department, as well as individual programs that affect them. So as I said before, the Planning Commission is being asked to review the reports and make a recommendation to City Council before the final version is forwarded to the state. In the general plan, there are 240 policy action items, not including the housing element. So right now, we have 126 actions that are ongoing. And examples of these would be activities that were initiated a long time ago and are continuing, or just generally ongoing activities that occur during the course of everyday business with the community. Eighty actions are complete. These might be a specific task that would have been completed. Twenty-one of the actions are in process. And then 13 actions are not yet scheduled. These might be things that have a budgetary limitation or another reason that they're just not really on the front burner. So some recent major general plan activities include updates to both the circulation element and noise element, and those occurred in 2019. In 2020, the city updated its six-cycle housing element, which has an eight-year planning period from 2021 through 2028. And some of the key changes to the housing element that we saw include new policies and programs that identify the actions that will be taken to make sites available during the new planning period. And so some of the more notable programs that stand out in the housing element include updating the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or ADU ordinance. And that would promote the construction of ADUs to help meet our housing goals. Also, reducing parking standards for smaller units located outside of the Uptown Town Center specific plan area, as well as utilizing fractional density units to encourage smaller units that are affordable by design. And so all those programs would help us achieve our housing goals for the city. And so here is a snapshot of housing production that occurred in 2020. We had 110 units that received their certificate of occupancy. The majority of these were multifamily units. And just shy of 90% of the final permits actually came from the Uptown Town Center specific plan area. And 75 of the units had belonged to the Oak Park Phase 4 development. For units under construction, we show there were 41 units being built. And I will note that the report recognizes the year a permit is issued and under construction. And so although there might have been other units certainly under construction in 2020, those permits might have been issued in the previous year and reported in the 2019 annual report. Or another scenario that could have occurred is that they may have been issued in 2020 but already received their certificate of occupancy. So this number is a little bit misleading, I just wanted to point that out. Another notable number is in the last row, and that is for the units entitled. So last year alone, 2,493 new residential units were entitled, with the majority of these coming from the Beechwood and the Olson-South Chandler Ranch specific plans. During 2020, the Redtail Apartment Project, which is the 200-unit project, was also approved. And then there were a number of other smaller multifamily residential projects that also received entitlements. And this table shows the latest six-cycle regional housing needs allocation, which is also referred to as the RENA. And it includes our progress so far in meeting the RENA. So under the new six-cycle, which has a planning period from January 1st of 2019 to December 31st of 2028, the city is required to plan for 1,446 new dwelling units. And so keep in mind that we report on housing and try to hit the state requirements, but the city is not obligated to ensure that the number of dwelling units are built within the timeframe, since that's something that the private development community helps us with. But it is obligated to ensure that there is sufficient land appropriately zoned and served. With all that said, you can see that we've already began making progress on achieving our RENA numbers. And you can see in the low and very low income level categories, we've already made quite a bit of progress. And we can attribute that to being able to count both Oak Park Phases 3 and 4 towards the sixth cycle. Based on the total number of entitled residential units that we saw in 2020, we can certainly expect to see the number of completed units rise each year as we work through this new cycle. So to help move along the development of housing and meeting the RENA numbers, the City Council had previously established the Housing Constraints and Opportunities Committee back in 2015, otherwise known as the HCOC. The HCOC has been meeting regularly over the years and has made substantial progress to reduce barriers to housing development, with some of their notable progress being a reduction in development impact fees, also reducing water and sewer connection fees, and reducing traffic impact fees for infill residential. And so in 2020, the HCOC met five times, and they acted as a steering committee for work related to the housing element update. Overall, this group played a major role in guiding some of the new housing programs that were ultimately adopted with our housing element, and some of which have already been implemented. The next big task in 2021 is to resume with discussions on the implementation of the six-cycle housing element as we're working on some text amendments. And as part of this process, the HCOC will help weigh in on issues that affect housing policies and procedures. So we plan to keep them busy in 2021. And as mentioned previously, 2020 was a big year in that both the Beechwood and Olson-South Chandler Ranch specific plans were approved. So there were 952 units approved for Beechwood and 1,293 units approved for Olson, which is a total of 2,245 new housing units. And this is just a brief summary of our progress last year. So 95% of the general plan action items are either complete, ongoing, or in process. The fifth-cycle housing element is now complete. And with the adoption of the six-cycle housing element, the city will begin tracking progress on the new action items and programs that it contains. We're already tracking progress on our six-cycle RENA numbers, for which we have a target of 1,446 residential units. Let's see, certificates of occupancy issued in 2020 remained relatively high as we saw 110 new units get completed, the majority of which were on the West Side. As of December 31st, 2020, there were 41 residences under construction and 60 residential permits either ready to pick up or in plan check. And we're also seeing that there's been an increase in these permits being for ADUs. Lastly, there were 2,493 new residential units that were entitled last year. And that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Compliments to you on putting together an extensive and impressive report card here on the actions that have taken place. As a part of the staff presentation, are you going to provide any additional comments at all on the housing element action implementation status, which was kind of a separate section in the staff report?
Right, so it was a separate section in the staff report. And 2020 was kind of an odd year because we were already tracking for our RENA, our new RENA cycle. But we hadn't been yet, you know, tracking progress on the new housing element. So we were still using the fifth-cycle housing element. So all of the action items that the housing element contains for the 2014 to 2019, we certainly made more progress. So there were some programs in there that focused on, you know, the specific plans. So we had a lot of completed tasks in the action items for the housing element. But I didn't prepare anything specific in this presentation, but certainly we can take a look at that if, pull up the staff report, if it's something that you want to dive into.
I think that's fine for now. If questions arise related to that, we can certainly flip back and forth as needed be. This is obviously not a development-related public hearing, but it's a public hearing on something of which the Planning Commission does have to take an action or a recommended action. So I think it would behoove us to follow kind of our normal format for a public hearing, which would be, first of all, the staff report, which we just heard. And then any commissioners that have questions of staff, we could do a round of that, and then we'll open the public hearing and see if there are any public comments. And then come back ultimately to any other questions, discussion, and some action by the commission. So with that, I would start perhaps with Commissioner Neal and ask if you have any questions of staff on this item.
Just one. Darcy, on those 13 items that have not yet begun, on the attachment one, are those monthly in the to-be-schedule line for status?
Yes, the majority were to-be-scheduled across the different departments. I think there was only one that funding was just permanently pulled. And I want to say it was related to art.
Hazardous education, was that it?
I'm not sure it was, there could have been more than one. I know there was one that funding was just pulled indefinitely. And that was stemming from the prior recession. So I think we're waiting for, you know, any movement. But the other ones, possibly that you're mentioning, there might be one more that is not, you know, on the front burner at all. But all the other items that are not yet scheduled, I think their intention is to eventually move forward with them.
Okay, great, thank you. That does it for me, Mark, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, any questions of staff?
I have one or two. And first of all, I want to echo what you said, Mark. A great presentation, Darcy, both the staff report and your presentation tonight. It's very easy to follow along, and you had a lot to report on. So kudos to staff. Obviously, we've been busy, both staff and planning commissioners. A couple of questions, just for clarification. I think you said, Darcy, that for the RENA portion, was it the Housing Constraints Committee that designated the property? If we didn't meet the housing needs, at least they identified the property potentially to be developed. Is that correct? Is that the group that identified that? Or was that a City Council effort or staff effort? Who was involved?
Right, so we did use the HCOC as a steering committee. And so we had some exercises last year in which the HCOC was identifying sites that could be potentially, you know, developed to meet our RENA numbers. And so then our consultant, MIG, further refined that list to make sure it was meeting state requirements in terms of size, you know, how it was, if it was next to other, you know, built development, or if there are multiple sites that could be developed into one. So the HCOC kind of was the first stop to sort through available sites that we could use to meet our RENA numbers. And then we just further condensed it down to what the state was, we knew was going to accept.
Okay. I have a second question. And, you know, I don't know if this is for you, Darcy, or maybe it's a Warren question. And I'll just get it out there. I mean, when you see in hindsight for the number of homes that were entitled, I mean, that number just jumps out. And I know that this is a general plan update, but our general plan is 18 years old. Is there any momentum building for a general plan update process? I know a lot of those elements have been updated along the way, but is there any discussion or momentum building for an overall general plan update?
So currently, we don't have a program or schedule for update of the land use element. You're right that the land use element is fairly old if you look at the years. But really, the idea with the land use element was to implement the specific plans for growth. And because of the recessions, literally, we kind of lost 15 years of the general plan trying to get the specific plans to a point where they could actually move to construction. So it's literally now that we're actually to, kind of the first step of really implementing what was planned 18 years ago. At some point, I think we are going to hit a point where it becomes clear to the community that the land use element needs to be updated just to accommodate whatever direction the community and the council sees fit. But right now, based on the amount of development that's still allowed within that general plan, we really haven't hit kind of a wall yet. There's still a lot of capacity within the general plan to accommodate growth. And therefore, I don't think it's necessarily a priority. If all of a sudden the community, I guess priorities change drastically where the general plan was no longer in sync with those, then that would be a good reason to then to start to look at updating that land use element.
Yeah, I know, it's a complex process. Is it sometimes a budget issue too? Or, I mean, Warren, what's the industry standard? How many years before you do a whole general plan update or land use update?
Well, the rule is, it has to be current. It has to accommodate growth, like under the housing element. Usually, it's the inability to get your housing element certified that forces you to update the land use element. There isn't an actual rule for how often you have to update your housing element or your land use element. So as you could see, we were easily able to update our housing element last cycle based on how much capacity for growth was within the land use element. You know, and I think you'll look around, Gattascadero's general plan, I think, was adopted in 2001. So it's actually a couple of years older than ours. But I think they're kind of under the same situation where there just wasn't a lot of growth during the recession. So there's still capacity within the general plans to accommodate growth.
Okay, thank you. I feel a lot of progress because we were all involved in, you know, the update of the circulation element and that kind of thing. So I just had to ask that kind of overall umbrella question. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Mr. Christensen, comments, questions, rather?
Thank you. I think the previous two commissioners covered a couple of my questions. I did have one question, and I'm not sure who his staff might be able to answer this. Has something been considered for the infill for our West Side community in regards to, I don't know that we have any, and maybe I'm incorrect, but there's any specific plan with historical homes? I know I discussed this before, maybe with Warren early on, before I became a commissioner, just briefly. But coming up with a plan that will also help with that infill plan to make it easier for people to come forward if they live on properties with homes that have historical value to the city? Has that been taken any kind of consideration, has it been discussed?
So, not that I'm aware of any specific direction that we're going with in regards to historic homes that are on the West Side. So we do have our Uptown Town Center specific plan and also our zoning code that we rely on when we have any changes to a historic home or even a commercial site, as we saw recently with Clausen. So we, you know, we have a process to follow. Is the question more on redeveloping to like a higher potential when you have a historic site?
I guess, yeah, because it doesn't seem, and I could be mistaken, that we have a real guideline currently for the maintenance and upkeep of historic homes in a sense for the city. And I know they talk, it's discussed in here about, you know, moving forward with a historic plan for downtown and some items in that regard. And so my thought was, if it had been discussed, of coming up with some guidelines and plans for people that have those historic places. And so we could encourage more of that infill type of growth in town on the West Side, giving them better guidelines for maintenance, upkeep, and/or future development of those places.
So we don't necessarily have a specific program targeted at maintenance of historic homes. We do have the historic ordinance that protects historic homes from changes and demolition. In terms of, I think, you know, incentives to maintain those houses, I think, you know, obviously, the ability to build ADUs provides a lot of flexibility. Inherent in the Uptown plan is a lot of flexibility for using property creatively. So I think that also helps to, you know, allow people to, you know, fully realize the value of property, even if it does have a historic home on it. And I think also the short-term rental program, it seems like historic homes and short-term rentals kind of have been fairly compatible. So I think the current policy of, you know, allowing most of the short-term rentals to be located kind of in the historic part of town, you know, potentially has some sort of effect on encouraging the maintenance of those as well. But, you know, those are all, you know, kind of general programs, but I do think they do have some sort of beneficial impact to historic homes.
Okay, I would agree with that, a lot of what you said there. And I know when I was dealing with an historic home that I needed to, for a development, you know, it was a problem at the time. There were no set guidelines on how to manage any of that. That's it for me, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibson, questions?
Thank you. I have some questions in two main areas that I'll try and figure out how to ask my questions. But I do want to commence now. I found this report to be fascinating. I actually learned quite a few things that I was not aware of. So my first question has to do with, specifically referred to page 11, although it's found other areas in it. It's talking about our progress towards RENA. And I think we've actually had this conversation quite a few times in the year plus that I've been on the Planning Commission. But it talks about the number of units, of housing units. And I'm wondering if we also have some sort of planning that would give us some sort of projection on the number of people? Meaning, you know, so for example, if we have 250 units remaining and extremely low and very low, do we have any idea what the projection would be of how many actual additional population would be added to the city?
So Warren has notified me that we have 2.6 people per household.
Yeah, so the general number that's built into the general plan and a lot of our other forecasting documents is 2.6 people per household. So that's an average, including multifamily and single-family. It's probably a little different if you get down to the specifics of each land use density type. Typically, those numbers are derived from the census. So we are waiting to see what the census numbers from the 2020 federal census show us. And we'll probably be adjusting some of those assumptions based on the data gleaned from the census.
Okay. So where I'm going with this is, you know, I read throughout the report about the importance of trying to develop a balance between the jobs and the housing. And that just seems to me to be something obvious, but also very important. Meaning that if we don't have the housing for the people that would be coming here for jobs, then obviously, the commercial growth is going to be hindered. And so I was just wondering, you know, is there, along that line of thought, is there any sort of projection as to the number of school-aged kids that would be coming along with this housing?
I believe that we do have some of those numbers. They may actually even be in the housing element in terms of kind of the age distribution pyramids. But I think that was also from the last census. So I do believe as we get the next census information, we'll probably be able to fine-tune that. It does seem like the number of children within the community seems like it's in decline. And, you know, that is an issue I think we need to be aware of.
Okay, I guess, and that's kind of along the vein of where I'm going with this. I'm just trying to have some understanding after having spent eight years in the school district. So on page A4, page 16, it's referring to the role of the staff and the city in regards to the school district. What exactly is the role, if any, of the plan? What exactly is the role, if any, of the Planning Commission as it relates to the school district and providing information or interfacing with the school district for their planning purposes for population growth?
So I think it's not a direct line of communication. I think the general plan is the key document by which the Planning Commission and City Council establish what the growth projections and land uses are within a community. Based on that, that information then is available and provided to the school district. The school district should be able to project some of their future needs based on growth. As we were going through both the Olson and Beechwood specific plan update processes, the school district was involved in both of those processes so that, you know, they were aware that these new houses were coming. We did talk about a potential school site on Laney Road and Airport Road for the school. The school, you know, notified us that they were potentially interested in that site. But as they analyzed it, they finally decided to officially not ask for a site within either of those specific plans. So the city managers, city council have a direct liaison role with the school district. And they, you know, typically get very specific feedback on development projects and school issues that way.
Okay, so I appreciate that response, Warren. I mean, so let me just kind of put it this way, is that, you know, on page, on page A22, I'm reading about the possible conversion of Marie Bauer Elementary School to a public park. And, you know, all the conversation that we have about Rena and the, our responsibility to provide housing of all different levels. And yet I hear from the school district and I hear around town and even hear from some of people in the city council that everybody's expecting the housing that's going to be built is not going to be workforce housing. I'm just kind of baffled as to where people are getting that information because that just seems contrary to everything that I'm hearing or reading. And then the school district is saying that they're declining enrollment. I just, I do not understand how you can add, you know, a couple thousand housing units or grow by 10,000 or 12,000 people and have declining enrollment. So when I was on the, on the school board, we had a meeting, facility meeting, regular facility meetings for a while with Tom Frucci and planning staff. And at that point, the consensus was that one or two new elementary schools were going to be needed to be built. And so I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the conversation and then the idea that not only are we being told that we don't need any new schools, even though the population's going to grow by 10,000 or 12,000, but we actually are going to close one. And I'm just trying to figure out how are they coming to that conclusion? But that's more of a comment than a question, so that's all that I have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Commissioner Kovarubius, questions?
Yes, thank you. And again, as I continue to learn kind of the process and kind of get caught up on where we're at, some of these questions might be more from my knowledge and understanding. Darcy, a quick question for you. You mentioned on page nine, under the 126 actions that are ongoing, you mentioned that some of these have been, I think the word you used was, they've been in process a very long time. My question is, are you stating that some of these are five years in the process, 10 years in the process? I'm just curious, 126 of these actions that are ongoing, when we say a very long time, how far are we talking in some of these cases?
Yeah, so the different elements of the general plan have been, you know, updated over the years. And as we discussed earlier, you know, the land use element was last updated in 2003. So some of the action items that are contained in the different elements, they might just be ongoing, just everyday business activities. And so technically then you could just say it's, you know, on a day-to-day basis for the last, you know, 18 years, whereas other things might have a shorter timeframe. So I think it just depends on the particular action item. With the new circulation element, there might be something on a shorter timeline that's as needed or ongoing, but might, you know, have a completion date. So it just, it really just depends on the specific task at hand.
Got it, got it. Okay, I appreciate that. On page 11, the HCOC committee that meets, you mentioned that they met five times last year. Are they required to meet a certain number of times every year?
No, they're not. The HCOC has been working on removing barriers to housing over the last, I guess, almost six years now. And so they were formed out of the last housing element, the 2014, 2019 housing element. And so they've, they didn't actually meet in 2019. So they had made so much progress, you know, prior, in the prior years. And then in 2020, the big focus was the housing element. So we wanted to use their expertise. They, we have a couple commissioners, a couple council members, and then some, there's developers, public at large. And so all of that collective input was really helpful as we were coming up with, you know, new programs for the, for the housing element updates. So they weren't required to meet a certain number of times, but we were able to have them meet and they're all, you know, volunteering their time. So it was, so in 2021, just to give you an idea, we're hoping that we can reconvene about five times because we do have a lot more to talk about with implementation of our housing element. So there might be years that they meet once or twice. I think it just depends on, you know, what's going on, what we're trying to, you know, what's the task at hand, what we're trying to move forward with.
Got it, got it. I appreciate that. I don't know who this question is for, but again, another just curiosity question. Under the action items, the brief descriptions, I noticed that there was an item there that was suspended. Just out of curiosity, who suspends any particular action? Is it, is it the council? Is it the Planning Commission?
I imagine it would be the council. Do you know which particular?
Yeah, I noticed that the, under safety elements, there was an item there that supports, sponsors exhibits and presentations in secondary schools, and it says it was suspended insufficient resources. So is that, was that a council decision or is that something that we recommended?
Right, so it's probably council-directed due to budget for police and fire.
Okay, all right. So if there's an action that is suspended or no longer ongoing, that's, in most cases, it's a council decision?
Right, and so that's kind of where we, you know, doing this report every year is a good opportunity to look at the different, you know, every, every single action item that we have in the general plan to see where we're at. Because there have been a couple, like what you were saying, if it's, you know, stands out, like what's going on. And so I know one that was brought up earlier, the public art funding that had, you know, been essentially suspended because of the recession, but it was worded differently. So, so those do come up as part of this report every year. And then it kind of just, you know, reminds the different departments that have contributed, you know, to make sure that we're addressing, you know, if there is something suspended, maybe next year, you know, are we going to pick up on it again? So, yeah, so I think it's a good one that you pointed out.
Okay, I really appreciate that. And again, kudos, great report. I kudo, I agree with everybody's comments regarding that. One last final question, kind of along the lines, I think, of Commissioner Gibson's questions regarding Rena and affordable housing and whatnot. I understand that under the general plan, we have a responsibility to make sure that we have sufficient capacity. Interesting on page 36, B136, that the remaining Rena obligations that we have as far as housing are all in the low to very low area. So I guess my question is, I know we've made strides. I saw the report in how many units in 19, how many units in 20 in this area. But Mike, I guess Mike, I'm trying to understand, if there's 383 units we have capacity for, for the low to very low income category, who has the responsibility to make sure that those, those units come to fruition? Is that the Planning Commission's responsibility, the cities? Is that a combination of the two? I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to understand. Because I mean, we certainly met, if this started from 1-1 of 19 and it goes through 12-31 of 28, already we've met the above moderate and moderate categories. But once again, we seem to be shortfall on the low to very low, which seems to be a problem, at least feedback for me in the area of affordable housing.
Yeah, so let me take a stab at answering your question. So on page 36, I think you're initially looking at table one, which is the six-cycle Rena, which has the breakdown of 383 remaining low and very low. So that table is based on, it comes from our housing element, the housing element update. And so that is, after all of the credits that are taken into account, that is our, what we have left over. So, so 383, so basically the table's saying that we're going to be able to meet our above moderate and our moderate, and here's what's left over, you know, to meet our Rena. And then as you move on to tables two, three, and I think four, you'll, you'll see that we still have these quantified objectives that we're tracking to say, you know, that we are making progress on actually meeting, you know, all of the income categories, not just the ones that, the 383. So that 383 also, as we were updating our housing element, we had to identify where we could accommodate those. And so that was the exercise of going through the housing element update. And then, but we're, but we're still tracking the overall number of 1,446. And so tables three and four, those are based on, you know, permitted, the building permits that have been issued. And so we're tracking that way, but also tracking on completed. Because most people, at the end of the day, after, you know, our 2028, we're going to know how many units actually got built. So that's kind of how all those tables work together.
Got it. So if I'm reading the table correct, which is again, another reason why I was trying to understand or ask the question, if I'm looking at table number three, you're, I'm seeing that under building permits issued, zero in the extremely low and very low and only nine in 2020, zero in 19. Is that accurate?
Yes, zero for 2019 and zero for 2020. Yeah, so again, we're focusing on kind of a key category issued. So our permits go through a cycle of being applied for, issued, and then finalized. And we report on all of them. So this table is just focusing on building permits that were issued. So it is misleading because you might, as I mentioned with the, you know, what was, what we've seen completed in 2019, there were low-income housing units for Oak Park Three that we can count, and in 2020, it was Oak Park Phase Four. But those are tracked as in, in the next table as, as completed, so finalized. So that's why I feel like table four, or I guess, I have two table threes, but it should be table four, the completed units by affordability, that's probably the best way to actually track. Because in a given year, you know, you could have something issued and finalized, and it just gets kind of lost in, in the report.
Right, I see that, okay.
And I think one other thing to keep in mind when you're looking at the building permits, single-family units kind of come in one permit at a time, so you kind of see them average out year over year. But the extremely low and low-income projects typically always are part of a larger multifamily, potentially tax credit type project. So we build those every couple of years. So you'll see a couple of years with zero, and then you'll probably see a year with maybe 100. That's kind of how Oak Park got rebuilt. So that project that we've worked with, the Housing Authority over next to Kohl's and Walmart, I think that would be a good example. When we issue the permits for that, all of a sudden you'll see like 70 or 80 new low and very low income permits all, you know, pop up in a single year. And that's typically kind of how it works with that kind of housing product. But I think in terms of your first question, you know, who's really responsible for keeping track of this and making sure we're making progress? You know, it is, you know, both the city council, the Planning Commission, as well as the Housing Constraints Committee, I think all three bodies play, you know, slightly different roles in it. And that's really why, you know, we do this annual report so that the Planning Commission can see what progress we're making. At the end, you can make recommendations to the city council. So if there's things that you believe as a commission aren't being properly addressed or we're not making proper progress on, this really is your opportunity to voice that to the city council. And ultimately, the city council can potentially adjust priorities to, to address those kind of concerns.
Awesome. Warren, Darcy, thank you for clarifying those questions. No more questions.
Thank you, commissioners. I think it's apparent from the detail of the Planning Commission's questions that that speaks to kind of the depth of the review that each of us undertook, and I appreciate that on behalf of everybody in the commission. My questions were essentially answered. I may have a few comments during the discussion portion. So I think unless any individual commissioner has other questions, I would suggest we open the public hearing on this item. Do we know if we have anybody present who would like to comment?
We do not have any callers, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and send this back to the commission for discussion and action. Maybe we can run through one more time quickly with any of the discussion points, and I'll flip the order upside down now that Rob is a veteran of what, a meeting and a half or two. So Mr. Kovarubius, would you like to start us off with any discussions further on this topic?
No, no further questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gibson?
It would just be a comment that I think it's incumbent on the city and, from what I'm hearing, the Planning Commission to be very mindful of creating opportunities for adequate workforce housing. A few years ago, I actually was, you know, I was hearing all sorts of reports about the number of hotel rooms and the commercial development that was wanting to take place in the town. And it occurred to me that the only way that that was going to happen is if there was actually houses or a place for people to live. Because if you build a hotel, or you build, I think there's at least nine hotels that have some sort of development rights at this point, that just in the year that I've been on the commission, those people don't live here now. And the only way that anybody's going to be able to open a business and have commercial growth is if there's adequate housing. And it just seems like, although, you know, obviously we can't build the housing, that's not our role or function, we just need to be very mindful that that is something that is very important for us to figure out how to accomplish. Because it's more than just doing what we should be doing in terms of being able to provide housing for people of all income means we can't have adequate commercial economic growth if we don't also do the same. So that would be my comment or concern that I would be passing along. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen, anything else to add?
You know, from Commissioner Gibson's comments, I just kind of had a question and thought, actually, and I'm not sure who to direct it to, but staff in general. Do we, does the city in itself track demographics or do a demographic study? And do they correlate it with this particular plan in any way when they're looking at this, when you're reviewing this and you're going over projects or things like that? Is there, is there something that you guys use?
So there, underlying the housing element is a series of demographic and economic workforce projections. Those are developed both by the state of California, because the state actually allocates these units by region. So they actually have, you know, certain demographics that they're projecting that we're supposed to be accommodating. Then Slocog, our local council of governments, they do a further analysis. So when they distribute the units between the cities and the counties, that's based on a specific formula that's based on demographic as well as workforce projections throughout the region, employment data, it's a fairly sophisticated process. So when we get this number of 1,446 units that we need to accommodate over the next 10 years, that's based on a lot of demographic analysis, both by the state and Slocog. And then we build on that locally with our housing element. So I think the answer is yes, there's a lot of demographic analysis that goes into these numbers.
Great, yeah, and I am familiar with the Slocog. I just wanted to hear what you guys, you know, how you take it into account. I think the only thing that we should take into consideration as we're looking at this is the dynamics are changing faster, especially after coming out of a shutdown year. Personally, I know, just from talking to the public and various people and listening to people, there's definitely a demographic shift and a large one, and it's fast and fast-moving. So moving forward, I think whether we have the actual studies completed from the state, which I don't think the state's going to be able to keep up with our particular location, at Slocog. to keep up with our particular location, and Slocog, and I don't know how fast Slocog moves, but I would say that that's something that the city and its leaders should truly take into account, and reaching out to, you know, the businesses and business professionals, because it is changing dynamically quickly, and I think it's happening statewide. And just as a note, I think it's happening here very quickly, to kind of refer back to Commissioner Gibson's points. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. And it is a fantastic report. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, any other comments?
You know, no comments, other than I can relate to Field's comments about workforce housing. And we know the cost of real estate is just going crazy right now. And I think we all want to make sure our workers can find housing. And if we think about our own families, will our next generation of children be able to buy into a home? So I think that's something that we need to keep in balance. How we plan for that, I think, is a million-dollar question. And I do think I would urge the Council to at least start the discussion when we should do a land use element update, a general plan update. I kind of think that that would be wise to start having that dialogue. So a couple of my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Thank you. Each year when we review these annual reports, I'm pleased and honored that I'm part of a city that takes general plans so seriously and implements what is, or tries to implement, what is the vast majority of the action items in that plan. And they just don't put the plan on the shelf, as I'm sure many municipalities do. So it just makes me pleased to work for, or to be part of such a great community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I just have kind of one comment. Some of the questions in the lines of discussion that have occurred tonight were paralleling some of my review and my comments. They kind of started with the question that Commissioner Davis posed about the general plan update. And it seems to me that foundational elements of this plan that go back eighteen years is getting a bit stale. And I would like us to kind of keep our eyes open as we march forward throughout this year and beyond, as to when might be the appropriate time to review some of these. I would concur with Commissioner Neal that the city has done, I think, as good a job as any community have ever seen in the implementation side of this, taking it very seriously and carefully documenting, carefully pursuing many of the ideas and concepts that are embodied in the general plan. If you look around, many states require, you can call it a general plan, a comprehensive plan, or a guide plan, it's different nomenclature, depending on where you are in parts of the country. But in many cases, it's a ten-year requirement statewide for updates of comprehensive or general plan guide plans. And I think it would maybe behoove us to begin to think about that. I think the land use plan, the updates that have occurred, probably still lays out a pretty good quantity analysis. Admittedly, the growth in the city, if you look back to earlier versions of the land use component, the growth has been moved back a little bit because of the economy and the times in terms of the actual fulfillment of build-out. But the build-out numbers are still there. I think what I think the city might need to assess would be more the quality sides of living in this community. And it's the balance of housing, it's the commercial district, it's the roadway, entryway corridors, the commercial corridors downtown that we're going to talk about tonight. Some of those elements may be able to be reviewed, refreshed, as time goes on. So that would be my only comment. I think we've done a great job as a community in implementation. We've done a great job in updating certain elements, like circulation components of the parks, noise, housing certainly has been exemplary, but I think there may be other aspects of this plan that we need to look at as well. And so I would like to keep the door open to do that perhaps as we go forward. With that, as statements and comments and questions by all of us, unless anybody has others, I think it would be appropriate to ask if there's a motion.
I just wanted to, this is Commissioner Christensen.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to echo your comments. I totally agree. For the record, I think we do need to start considering maybe an update on that. So that's all.
Great. Thank you.
Chairperson Cogler, Commissioner Neal, I'd like to make a motion, please.
By all means, please do.
I'd like to recommend approval of the twenty twenty general plan annual report to the City Council.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Christensen. Any other discussion on this? If not, I would ask staff to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Cover Rubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Chairperson Cogler?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Very good. Thank you. That completes our public hearings for this evening. So we will move on to item H, which is a discussion item on the Railroad Street Urban Design Streetscaping Concepts Study Session. Take it away, staff, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this will be kind of a joint presentation. I'll make the first part, and then the city engineer, Dave Athie, will make the second. So a little bit of background on this, we have this informal railroad street design concept that was prepared in twenty eighteen by Wallace Group. And we've had a number of projects come forward that actually have started to incorporate features that were in this concept plan. And at one of our DRC meetings a few weeks ago, the DRC rightly asked some questions about, you know, formalizing some of the standards, just so that we actually had some continuity, especially with streetscape elements moving forward. So based on that, the Planning Commission asked basically to agendize this for discussion. So that's what this is tonight. This is a study session. We're not going to be taking any formal action tonight. We haven't notified the public of this, but we thought this would be a good opportunity, just kind of to brief the Planning Commission on kind of, you know, the background on this project, and then talk about ideas about how to kind of move this maybe on to the next level, to formalize some of these standards, so that as projects move forward, we end up with that consistency. And as we move forward, we will have to do some additional public outreach and coordination as part of that process. So with that, just kind of run through, you know, how we got here. So this started back in twenty sixteen, and the question was, at the time, we were looking for more parking downtown. And it occurred that Railroad Street was right next to downtown, and probably we could maximize parking there if maybe we one-weighted it and put diagonal parking in. So we kind of started talking and discussing that concept, just as a general idea. And we figured, well, if we're going to do something like that, we could probably do some streetscape with it as well. So that was kind of the genesis of it, that got staff talking about and kind of looking at some ideas about what the potential for Railroad Street might be. About that same time, the city and Main Street had established a downtown task force, basically to explore ideas, to enliven and revitalize the downtown area. And one of those groups came up with, you know, this idea of Railroad Avenue as an artisan alley. And I think you kind of see these colored images right here. This is what one of the working groups came up with in terms of ideas about public art, and just kind of fun things that you could do, kind of in, you know, back alley kind of setting, really to maximize the area. So the whole task force, which I think was about forty people from the city and Main Street, thought that was a good idea, and actually allocated money to develop some sort of concept plan for Railroad Avenue. So that's kind of what got this moving ahead. So based on that, the city hired Wallace Group to prepare that study. So the idea was that was going to be both a parking analysis of Railroad Street, and then a design concept. So the first thing we tasked Wallace Group with was figuring out how to get more parking on Railroad Street. So they did, and Wallace Group's an engineering firm, they did every possible layout of parking and one-way traffic on Railroad. And ultimately, what we concluded is that if you added diagonal parking on Railroad Street, you would actually reduce the number of parking that's currently there. It's just a narrow street, there's only forty feet curb-to-curb there, and the most efficient way to park it is the way it's currently parked, which is parallel on both sides. So we were kind of disappointed when we finally came to that conclusion, but that's just the reality of the dimensions of that street. So that kind of ended the process of trying to figure out how to put diagonal parking on the street. But the other part was the design concept, and the design concept actually progressed better, and that was a lot more promising. So working with Wallace Group, we kind of played with the idea of, you know, giving Railroad Street a railroad theme, the idea of potentially using old railroad signal equipment, potentially as thematic elements, kind of playing off the train station, and some of the historic elements of town related to the railroad. So that became the genesis of the idea for the design. So Wallace Group prepared this plan, which is informally referred to as the Paso Robles Railroad District Corridor Concept Streetscape. So there's an arch feature potentially at Twelfth and Railroad. You can see kind of they did a number of different renderings, maybe overhead catenary lights, new streetscape with trees, planters, enhanced crosswalks, continuous paving, public art-type features within the corridor. So they put together a lot of ideas, and they really focused on Twelfth to Tenth Street. But the reality is, is these concepts lend themselves really well to being extended all the way up to Fourteenth Street, past the California Coast Brewery. So they did, you know, the planned sections for us, the cross-sections, kind of laying this out. This is the vision, basically, where we have that alleyway that is next to the theater, that comes back to Railroad Street. So the idea they had was to create some sort of mid-block pedestrian crossing that had the railroad thematic elements. The back of the theater is kind of a large blank wall feature. The idea there is potentially that could be repurposed into some sort of public art-type element. Different character elements that we could use throughout the area is also included in the plan. They came up with a streetscape palette. This isn't adopted, and I think this is one of the things we want to talk about tonight, is, you know, what really should be the palette for the streetscape along that corridor. We did hold an open house for the public. So in twenty eighteen, we had an open house at Studios on the Park. We put up all these display boards, invited everybody from downtown to show up. We actually had a great turnout. I think we had almost a hundred and fifty people from downtown show up, got really good coverage. We did this kind of word cloud, so we did have people take surveys. And these are kind of the key comments that we got from the public, but, you know, fun, innovative, interesting, wonderful, needed, inviting. This was basically the public's impression of this plan. And, you know, we did a survey. So, you know, the vast majority of everybody that took the survey thought this plan was a great idea. Very few had, you know, negative thoughts about it. So it, you know, definitely had public support moving forward. At the same time, we had a couple private developments moving forward that luckily fit with the theme of what was envisioned. So California Coast Brewery, which used to be Tazzy's Automotive, was going through the process, and that's now completed. Obviously, fits really well with kind of the railroad vibe that we're envisioning. And then we had the backyard beer garden, that was moving along as well. It's also been completed. So actually, you know, that corner of Thirteenth to Fourteenth on Railroad really fits with kind of what the vision was. It was, I think, more just, you know, a happy, you know, circumstance, that those projects just tended to happen right as this plan was coming together. But what we learned from those projects is that the Uptown Specific Plan Design Guidelines, especially the warehouse industrial design guidelines, work really well. So when we were looking at Cal Coast Brewery in the backyard, they fit really well with the specific plan design guidelines. So we're actually pretty confident that the Uptown Plan works well for dealing with the private side of the development. I think the issue that we really have is just nailing down the streetscape, so it, you know, further enhances what we're looking at. So that brings us to this year. So what kind of got this discussion going was the Lush Limo Reuse Project, which is right behind the theater. This has been to DRC. So DRC basically has approved this concept to redo that building. It's going to be kind of a wine tasting brewery, gathering kind of space there. So once again, you know, the architecture works really well with the warehouse district guidelines. Really, the question the DRC had was, you know, the streetscape, you know, here's that mid-block crossing, this is a little bit different than what was envisioned in the district corridor plan. And really, what the DRC was saying is, we really need to get to an adopted standard, so that as this project gets built, and all the other projects get built, they all are going to fit together, which we, as staff, couldn't agree with more. So with that, I'll turn to the city engineer, who's been doing some work just on kind of analyzing the character of this district. So Dave, are you on the line?
Yeah, Warren. Thanks. I'm just going to switch it over to my control here. So let me know when you can see the screen again.
Hang on a second, Dave. Let me switch it on my end, too.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Planning Commission Chair. Here tonight, I talk about streetscape. I've been looking around the railroad, what I call corridor area. So that's from about Fourteenth Street to the train station itself. You know, obviously, railroad doesn't go through right to the train station, but if you, I think if you walk along Pine in that lower area, you get kind of a feel for that whole railroad corridor. So looking around at the different styles and architecture, we've got some nineteen forties sawtooth-type buildings that we're probably manufacturing. We've got different, a lot of similar-type features, like corrugated siding with old paint that looks rustic and weathered. We also have this, you know, I'm not really an architect, but this type of style of building, this is the original Southern Pacific Depot. It's still there at the train station. So these are the kind of features that you could use, the city could use on some type of streetscape project, or on the architecture of buildings that come in. Same with this more industrial-style look that's in that area. So what we do, we walk around, we look at the historic, you know, historically what's been done, is we try to take those design features and incorporate those where it makes sense into some type of streetscape palette. You know, walking around some more, we have different types of benches. These two benches that are shown on the screen are what's at the train station right now. I'd like to stick to that, you know, I would propose to stick to that kind of concept, to use a backless and a backed chair, so that it's a common theme. And so what you want your streetscape to be is to have a common theme as it runs through there, so people know, hey, I'm in the railroad district. You know, it's this funky, gritty, industrial-type area, but, you know, hey, it's been upgraded to, you know, to more of a, you know, today's use. So we have this, this is kind of more of this trash can that's kind of tapered, is downtown style, whereas the trash can that's straight would be, is at the train station. You know, I would propose something like that. Hey, we want to use this style that's at the train station through the railroad district. So we'd get kind of away from this, you know, downtown style, just so folks know that you're in the downtown district. Just to kind of go back and show you, this picture here showed the tapered-type, tapered-type trash receptacle. Bench is clearly the same. One other feature, I think, that I'll go back to right here is, you know, one thing in these railroad districts, back in the day, nineteen forties, nineteen twenties, you know, overhead utilities were everywhere, right? Everything was starting to be electrified. Telephone service was being spread throughout the West. So I think that's, you know, that's one of the elements that we're going to talk about having as part of the streetscape standard, is keeping the overhead wires, the old telephone poles, on. poles on, on, on the street instead of requiring each, you know, each parcel as it, as it develops, undergrounding those wires. We would keep those concepts in this plan. Also, on the district, we have, in the area, we have two different paver types. This red and charcoal color with the bench is more of a downtown standard. You see it in a lot of areas of downtown. This gray, this gray type paver that's here, you know, this is now in, in use. This is at the brewing company down near 14th Street in front of them. We use these paver areas to catch the grade in areas where we don't need to worry about the cross slope. It's a good use for pavers in those areas. Another thing you see, I thought that might be a nice item to incorporate would be railroad type themed art. And so you see down here on the right-hand corner of the screen, you know, this is a, some art there in front of a brush shed gallery at 10th and Pine. Something like this might be neat that would go along with, you know, a railroad theme along with the unearthed artifacts. So harkening back to the, you know, the glory days of Southern Pacific Railroad, something similar to that. Moving on, this was the, some of the items that were in the, the recommendations from Wallace Group. I have a metal, I just want to start with wood, just want to address wood upfront. Wood is a poor choice for a streetscape element. It's really nice and organic. It doesn't really fit with a railroad theme, you know, railroads are steel, you're riding the steel rails. And so, you know, I would propose that we went away from wood. Also, from the standpoint of, it's not very durable, it fades, and vandals, for some reason, enjoy breaking our wood features that are around town. So, you know, I would recommend that something you could use, we could use a similar Corten steel bench like this I had proposed to earlier. I would change that. The vegetated wall covering that's in the downtown, that's something that we could also do back there. This, this vegetated wall is right at the edge of the district, right at 12th and Railroad Street. Truncated domes, cast iron, as long as these are visually colored differently than the, whatever they're inserted into would be something we could use. That's an ADA requirement, so we can't really bend on that, but that is, we could do this since they're like a dark reddish color. Railroad lights, so lights on the, on the street, just want to flip forward here and see if I had it, there it is. So this is the, this is the light that is on Riverside. We have several iterations of these. This happens to be the PG&E light. There are options. You can get these with a teardrop hanging down, or you can get them up. You can get the lights with a single light on top. We do have single light poles, they're actually called luminaires. We have single luminaire poles over at the train station, so we could, you know, go with that single luminaire. But if we want more light, we can always go to the double, which is why we choose double luminaires around the town. But PG&E does have different options, and so that's one thing we could consider. Wallace Group did suggest these kind of teardrop lights or down, down-facing lights. The only challenge with custom lights is that the city has made a decision, citywide, that all lighting would be, all new lighting would be PG&E owned. So that would be my one recommendation is that we would go with the PG&E style. And I think they do have a, they do have a nice catalog that we could pick a light. Other elements that were in the plan are this wig-wag crossing gate. So, again, finding some type of old railroad artifact to install. Could not use these as it's currently proposed in the plan, and I'll just flip back to that real quick and show you. This is the plan with the crossing, the mid-block crossing here. As you can see, there's a wig-wag type gate setup. The challenge with this is that we wouldn't want to confuse the driving public, that this would be some type of traffic control, and we wouldn't want to confuse pedestrians that if you press the button and this thing's wigging and wagging, that the cars are going to stop. So, you know, maybe we can incorporate this in some part of the downtown district, or sorry, the railroad district, and turn this thing sideways, so it's more of an art feature in the area, and then we would have like our regular traffic controlled, you know, devices, the yellow signs, everybody dislikes, but everybody sees because they're annoying and brightly colored. And again, here's some more of that unearthed railroad artifacts that we could do. The catenary lighting, just to talk about that, illumination of the alley, definitely something that cities have done, and I, I personally think it's a good idea, and it provides more light in that alley. It could also be done on the street, so back and forth on the street. And just flip that real quick. So in this view, this is the top view looking down from 12th to 10th, the catenary lighting could stretch between some type of wood pole that would be reminiscent of that funky overhead overloaded pole wires that you see in so many of those old pictures. So going back, just to keep moving, we can propose our, you know, different type of style bike rack. Right now, our bike rack downtown is a black-coated steel round hoop-looking bike rack, so this is available for, for a change. Could also go with this rusted steel, or excuse me, cast iron tree grate, Starburst. We use black ones in the downtown, but this, definitely this, this rusted color would be appropriate for the downtown or for the railroad district. And again, here's that catenary lighting that I was just mentioning earlier. So, just getting into the discussion, because that's more of the fun part than listening to me talk about the streetscape elements. You know, we're looking for comments, any themes, you know, we don't have, not claiming to have every, every idea in the book, so we're always open to more ideas, get some direction. And then, you know, we're looking at the next steps being drafting streetscape standards, definitely getting public input, because that's very important to a successful streetscape plan, is having public buy-in, especially from the stakeholders, so the business owners along the area. I have talked to some of the business owners, obviously, the, the recent development that's here. I've talked to Arts in the Park about, as you can see, the murals on the wall there and their interest in that. And then also, again, the general public, so that we can come up with some consensus and move forward on a cohesive plan that is, one, easy to implement, and two, has a low cost to maintain and is good-looking and is durable. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chairman Kogler, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yeah, just to start this off maybe with a few comments. I was on the DRC when the Lush proposal came before us, and I think Mr. Christensen, and I don't remember who else was on as well. And one of the things, obviously, we referenced was this railroad district corridor plan and the elements that are contained within it, concept, I guess is a better term. And I truthfully was a bit chagrined that we were talking to the developer about implementing some of the, the elements of this concept when it was only a concept, that it hadn't really been thought through to the degree that city staff is now bringing forward to us, which I think is, is wholly appropriate. I view this as one of the city's really great opportunities to get something right here. And I think this concept begins to be an expression of ideas that points us in a direction that could really create a unique environment. And my only concern is, when we started tonight, we started talking about site furnishings. What are we going to have for benches? What are we going to have for trash containers? And yes, those details are important, but they're not the big picture items. The big picture items more, I think, are the, the feel of the place, the materials that are there in the public realm, whether it be curving, sidewalks, scoring. We talked a little bit about some of the, the other materials that would be used there. The catenary lighting has been used in various parts of the country. There's some wonderful places in Denver, for example, that, that have that. It's very effective, creates a great ambiance that I think could work here. So I, I just, I'm concerned, to be candid, that we don't miss the mark on this, and I assume, based on the staff presentation, the intent is that, that we would take this forward as a group, and we wouldn't be seeking any input from Wallace Group or anybody else in an RFP format to kind of take this concept to the next level, and maybe certainly we're capable of doing that. I would challenge us to say that this is such a unique opportunity that let's not be constrained too much by necessarily all the rules that are in place, and I would point specifically to lighting in that regard. I think lighting can be a make or break for a design district like this. And while PG&E may, may have other things in their catalog that may be very appropriate, I don't know. I would hate to see us limit ourselves just to that. Maybe we can convince PG&E to add a new fixture to their standard catalog that fits better with what the city is after, and that may or may not be necessary. I'm just speaking and kind of shooting from the hip. So, again, my concern is that we, we do this right, make sure that we're looking at the big picture elements before we, we bring it down to the more specific components of this. I think the improvements in the history that, that both David and Warren brought to me as a part of this were very interesting. I had no idea it started as a parking study, even though that meeting that occurred in 2018 was, was my first really public meeting that I attended in Paso Robles. And so it became an exciting enthusiastic idea, but I had no idea what its origins were. So it's come a long way. The improvements, be it the beer garden, be it some of the others, really are pretty remarkable, and they've fallen into line, and I'm glad to hear that the design standards that are specified in, in the town center plan apparently fit here. And I, I think that being the case, maybe ultimately, those are more integrated into this next step document, whatever that might be, rather than, than having to cross-reference between the two. But I think there's great potential here, and I'm curious as to what the other commissioners think, and ultimately what staff thinks about how we move this forward so that the next lush limousine remove, redo that occurs happens in a way that's certainly consistent with what we see is the theme here and what should occur. So with that, I would certainly invite other commissioners to comment, and, and I'm going to go through maybe in more random format here, at least the first time through. Commissioner Davis, do you have things you would like to, to add about this?
A question and a couple. First, I'll, I'll say I, I agree with a lot of those descriptive words you used up front in the staff report. I think it's very exciting. I agree with you, Mark. I think it's a real opportunity to make something special for our downtown. A couple of my thoughts, I, you know, if there's, you know, the murals on the walls, I'm hopeful that, you know, that we would follow a, a format that would convey the history of the railroad coming into Paso Robles and coming from the cattle industry. I know that's what we transported in, but we had wheat and barley, and hopefully the images would portray kind of a historical feel along with the railroad feel. I think they go hand in hand, so a couple things. David, a question for you. When I first looked at the graphics for tonight, my question was, is this district limited just to Railroad Street? And from what I'm hearing is it could be expanded to the actual train station on Pine Street and to further on the other side on Pine Street further north of 13th Street. So, how would you make that jog? Here's a circulation issue. How would you make that jog and make that continuity? Had you given any thought to that?
Yeah, so, you know, I think the, I think the, you know, the crosswalks and sidewalks that are there would, would be, would be your main continuity, and how you could tie it together really would be some kind of historical signage or some kind of, you know, art that connects the two areas together. In, in terms of, you know, redoing or, you know, upgrading Pine Street, you could do it in that block. It might be a little funky, but I think, you know, as, as, as just one idea, I'm not stuck on this, it would be like some kind of either art, railroad art, or some type of signage or something. Maybe some stamped concrete with some, you know, interesting designs in it that lead back and forth between the train station and, and this area.
Okay. So it, it's really more expansive than just Railroad Street itself. It, it could expand north and south of that.
Yeah, I mean, that could be one of the recommendations of the planning commission. We're really only looking, you know, at this initial concept was really looking at 10th to 14th Street. You know, this is kind of like the, the backyard of the downtown and, you know, really kind of having something different. Because once you go through the Paseo, and everybody has that experience, you're kind of like this different world once you get back there. And so we were trying to really focus on that and, and, you know, and, and make this like three-block area really tie together.
Now, I know Main Street was involved at some point, and I heard Warren's comment that this, originally there was a parking equation, and that didn't work with the diagonal parking. I did hear a comment last night at a Main Street board meeting about trash containers and can the, can the trash removal trucks get in? So I'm assuming that would be handled in the plan. I don't know if it has to do with the, the archways or where the trash containers are located, but I'm assuming that that would be planned for in...
Yeah, the archway could be, let me just go to that real quick, show you. So whenever we do one of these overhead arches or a traffic signal, the minimum height is 16 feet typically, and that's where you don't have to, like, so when you see, when you go under a bridge and you see a sign, if it's, if it's less than 16 feet, you have to sign it, and you have to put the height, the actual height of that on there. Typically, what we do, though, is, is we make these, the bottom part where you could theoretically drive a car underneath it would be at 18 feet. And that, that, at that point, we don't have to worry about anybody hitting this. 16 is definitely high enough for a fire. That's not, that's not a problem. But we typically build these arches at 18 feet just to avoid any kind of problem.
So trash can, can get in there and, and remove that?
Any truck, yeah, any truck. The biggest diesel truck you could put on the road would be able to get underneath this, definitely.
Well, I'm excited about the concept. I'd like to see it move forward, so thanks for your input here tonight, and I look forward to hearing more commissioner comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Neal.
Thank you, Chairperson Kogler. I agree with your comments completely. As, as we were looking at the Lush presentation at DRC, it became painfully obvious that we didn't have a, a real direction, and it would be nice to get one for, through 10th through 14th Street with the California Brewing at the north side, finished off with the new hotel, if it ever gets built, on 10th and Pine. A little chagrin that the, the new Cheval addition tends to turn its back a bit more than I would like. I think with this railroad concept in, you know, hindsight to railroad, the Hotel Cheval is kind of a, that's the entrance to the garage on that side, so. But I too, I, I also agree that I think if we could, bringing in, and I think this is what Commissioner Kogler was saying, is that, you know, if we can do it in-house, great, but let's not limit ourselves to that and, and maybe bring in outside assistance to really create something very, very nice and a little bit different, or a lot different for this portion of town. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Kogler. I, I find this extremely exciting. I, I was at the 2018 public meeting or charrette, and at the time, I, I was one of the people that was saying, we need to do this, absolutely. I, I really appreciate staff's comments on this, Warren and David, and what it seemed to me, what, and while I was listening and, and watching, I, I started looking for things related to railroad, railroad districts. related to railroad, railroad districts. And what it seemed to me is that what was resonating with me was that the, that there's a theme, that this is a certain vintage. And I think you mentioned 1940, so I was looking up 1940 architecture, that you're actually selling an era. I would think that it would be important for us to not just accommodate people on foot, but to actually encourage that somehow, that it would be designed such that, I mean, obviously there's only a certain limited amount of parking area within this area and this district that's being proposed, that whatever is results from this is that it actually would encourage and accommodate people walking through it and experience it, almost like hopscotching and checking out all the stores and enjoying that vintage and that era. And I absolutely agree with the idea of expanding this. What was proposed then and then what shows up formally is that this is just basically two blocks, 10th to 12th Street. And my question back then in 2018 was, why don't you go further north? If you could somehow go further south, as Sherry was indicating, that also would be wonderful. But I think we need to recognize that that's, whatever it is, that the architecture would have to be something that was called out, was suggested by staff, that there's a specific type of architecture, a certain period of architecture. I really, really like the concept of the railroad art. I was a model railroad aficionado when I was younger, when I had more time, and the idea of seeing the trucks or the signs. I mean, I for one would find that fascinating just to walk through, or as Sherry indicated, even having some historical information. So I absolutely concur with everything I've heard. I think we do need to have some sort of design standards, probably of a specific type of architecture, vintage, and I would rely upon those people, their architecture backgrounds to tell us what those are. But again, circling back to creating an experience that people are walking to this district from wherever they managed to park their car, and that they walk through it and enjoy that experience as well as visiting all the stores or the shops that are contained in that district. So those would be my comments.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I want to echo what my fellow commissioners before me have stated. I do believe that this can be an amazing addition to Paso Robles Downtown. I guess this is kind of a question I had. What would, if we were to continue this south towards the railroad station, which to me would seem to be an obvious idea, what would happen with, if there's current projects in the works, for example, like say the promenade and whatever else may be on Pine Street between this location and the railroad station? Maybe I'll ask that real quick first.
Yeah, so there is an approved project at the corner of 10th Street and Pine, Hotel Eva. Those sidewalk improvements are already designed at this point, and that permit is ready to issue. So it's not likely that, unless that project goes into redesign or something else happens, it's not likely that that would be able to catch it at that point. And that, the frontage of that project goes pretty much the whole distance on the east side of the street. However, the west side of the street is mostly the public emergency center and some other older buildings. So there is an opportunity to do something after the plan is, like, the city could do a streetscape project or something like that. So there is opportunities to do something along Pine Street in that section or further. Your recommendation could be to go all the way to the Union Pacific Yard down by 4th Street. So, yeah, that is available. But like I said, we are really focusing on this to be a, kind of like, I think, I can't remember who mentioned it, but a walkable area that is kind of the backyard of the downtown where people can get out there and enjoy themselves and visit the various buildings in the downtown, in the back door, the backyard of the downtown.
So kind of back to my comments that more than likely, it would make sense to, in the more immediate future, to see this happening north to 15th Street. I think that would be the obvious extension of it. I love a lot of the features with this. I think that there's a lot that can be incorporated, maybe even more so than what we've seen in these examples with some of the historical and railroad-type items that we can incorporate in. So I mean, it could almost be never-ending, I think. I do think it's pertinent that we probably work on this rather quickly. I think that we're going to see that area, a desire to have that area, people want to be in that area more so with their businesses as this comes to fruition better. I agree with Commissioner Gibson. I think definitely making it kind of more of a walkable location, at least for a block or two, would be really very important to add that to the design. I do like the overhead lighting. I think that that would create absolutely the type of ambiance that we want to achieve. And so to me, that would be one of the important factors. Lighting would be crucial. And so those are my comments. I think that it looks wonderful, and I can't, the ideas are there. I love that we can take this further, and hopefully, we can make this happen fairly quickly.
Thank you. Commissioner Kovarubius.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, interesting, prior to now, I didn't know anything about this project, if I'm going to be honest. Interesting to me that it started off as a kind of a parking analysis to see about changing parking there, adding more parking structures. I like the concept. I think it's, I'm always in favor of entertaining anything that helps and continues to beautify our city. I certainly think that something like this would enhance our downtown. I don't recall if it was David or who mentioned, kind of the backyard of downtown. I couldn't agree with that statement more. I've been down that street a couple of times, not many, because it is dark, it is different. One of the things that came to mind as I'm looking and listening to everybody speak is I'd be curious to find out how many of these businesses that currently exist would change. Because again, if you beautify this street, open it up a little bit, how many more of your restaurant, entertainment-type businesses would want to gravitate to this area, making offers to people like Carquest? I know nothing of Carquest as far as the building, who owns the building, if they own the building. Park Cinemas, all I believe is back there might be a door or two. But all you see is the back end. Same thing with, I think somebody mentioned Hotel Cheval, the back end of it just going to be the garage, the garage entrance. I'd be curious to find out if some of these businesses start to open up a little bit more on this back end if we do something like this. Studios in the Park, On Bar, Taffy McGregor's. I know they already have a little bit of a presence back there, but I think it would certainly enhance and motivate others to do the same. So I like the project. I do agree with a couple of the commissioner comments that extending it beyond 12th Street, I think, would be a very logical thing. I like what they've already started to do on that side of the street as you go towards 13th and 14th. So I do think that this could be a catapult to maybe something like that happening. So in general, I love the concept. I think it would be beautiful for the city, beautiful for the area. And yeah, lighting is important, the brighter or more inviting, I should say, that area is, I think, the more people you'll see walking and enjoying the elements. So overall, I do like the concept. Be interested to see how this progresses. That's all.
Great, thank you. Well, I do want to commend planning and engineering staff for the thoughts and the information you brought forward us this evening and kind of helping us maybe think a little bit about where this could go. There's a lot of enthusiasm in the voices of the commissioners tonight, I think, as to how this can continue to evolve as a very special place within the city. I think Hotel Eva probably preceded most of us on the commission today in terms of approval, except some of the historian types like Commissioner Neal. And I'm curious, was there ever a consideration when that was being reviewed of at least having some way to have pedestrians pass through that site and make it in a direct alignment or a near-direct alignment to the train station area rather than jogging a block over? That horse may have left the barn, very likely so. However, it seems like that could be a prime marketing element for a hotel to have that level of traffic and movement back and forth and exposure. So that isn't something that has to be answered tonight, but I would wonder if there's any potential, even if the project goes forward, to incorporate any element to make that happen or if that's simply too late. Also would note, obviously, that nothing has happened there, and the economy hasn't been very supportive. So should that change, maybe there's an opportunity that would arise to do something like that. I think the question I would have and I would ask on behalf of the commissioners is kind of, from a staff perspective, where do you see that we would go from here? You know, we've had a number of comments about, we like what we see, how do we make it happen? I think maybe is one way to sum that up. I think there's another question about whether or not we have the homegrown expertise in-house right now to take an objective look at this, to make sure that it's the most that it can be, and maybe the answer to that is yes. But I guess I would kind of throw it back to you, David and Warren, as to where would you see this going from here? Where do you see opportunities for the commission to fit in? And I would agree with, I think it was Commissioner Christiansen that said, probably better to address this sooner rather than later, because I do think this hopefully will be a continued growth area in the community as the economy evolves. So some reaction by staff, where would you suggest maybe we are able to take this?
Well, I think this is exactly what we're looking for, is your perspectives. You know, these comments are excellent. I think initially, staff was thinking that maybe this was something kind of simple that we could knock out in-house. But I think the commission brings up a lot of good points about the need to really dial this in and really do something that is going to work long-term and really be special. So I think the idea of potentially bringing in a consultant that could both move it fast, because I do believe moving fast is going to be the key as well, and then delivering basically really an exciting concept that everybody can get behind is probably key. So I think probably what we should do at a staff level is do a little investigation of consultants that might be available, budgets, what it would take to do kind of a quick design process with some public input and get to basically a design standard that we could get back to the commission and council for final adoption. So kind of explore that. Probably, we may want to consider maybe an ad hoc committee to the planning commission, where we get three commissioners that would basically just be assigned to working with staff and this consultant, if we end up going that way, to focus on getting this dialed in so that next time it comes back to the planning commission, it's going to be pretty close to a complete concept. So I think those are my initial thoughts of kind of the next step in terms of how to move this along. And I don't know, Dave, do you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Warren. I think, based on the workload and the different things that staff has, is working on right now, probably outside help, based on the commissioners' input tonight is probably the best way to go, just so we can get a really, a plan that really fits together well, all the elements work together. And then everybody, they can run a public input process too at the same time, or this consultant. So I think that's probably a good recommendation at this point.
I think Mr. Christiansen has his hand up. Was there something, Ty, you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you. And I think Warren, he answered what I was going to ask, but basically, I do believe, I was thinking the same thing, I think an ad hoc committee would help this move along if the staff has a lot of stuff on their plate. But obviously, staff would need to find a good design company or person, consultant to work with. But I do believe an ad hoc committee would really help this, I think, be pursued at a faster pace. That's my opinion.
Thank you. So Warren, would you foresee kind of coming up with a game plan or some options for a game plan for moving us forward for subsequent review at one of our meetings? Or how do you want to proceed with this going forward from tonight?
Well, we could, so I think there's two options. One is we can come back and talk about it some more, but I think we got pretty good input tonight. It seems like maybe you could tonight, if you want, appoint three members to an ad hoc, and then staff could then do some work, and then we could just call a meeting with that ad hoc and then kind of move forward. That would be a lot quicker than trying to agendize it for the whole commission to kind of get to the next steps. And then as that progresses, we'll report back to the commission in terms of kind of how it's rolling out.
Not having done this before in this format, how would you suggest we solicit and/or approve members for an ad hoc committee tonight?
So typically, the chair would ask for volunteers, those that would be interested. I'm guessing you're talking about half dozen meetings sometime over the next three or four months, if we're really going to get this done.
Yes. Commissioner Neal, did you have a comment to add? Looks like you have your hand up.
I think he's on mute.
Okay. Mr. Neal, if you're on mute, would you like to add something?
I would, thank you, and I was.
I was two a month ago. Thank you.
I spent a good amount of time in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and they have done something similar, I've forgotten until just a moment ago, with their railroad district that has really enlivened that part of town. And so I think that may be a reasonable model, as well as, I just was looking through and found the rail park in Philadelphia that is of interest as well. So there are lots of good things out there, and if nobody else wants to be on the ad hoc committee, I would be happy to volunteer.
So Commissioner Neal has expressed interest. I would probably suggest too that perhaps Commissioner Jorgensen, who's not here tonight, given her architectural credentials, might be an applicable person to be on this as well, that that's not required. The only comment I would pick up quickly on what Commissioner Neal just said is, if you can guarantee me that we'll have Hatch Peppers roasting like they do in Santa Fe and Railroad Park, I'm all in. That's an incredible place. Been there a number of times. Commissioner Christiansen.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would also volunteer to be on that committee. I really feel that this could be a really great project, and coming from a family that, kind of like Mr. Gibson, when they were younger worshipped rail cars and railroads and engines, I would be happy to be on that committee.
So we've got, by one form or another, three potential candidates, Commissioners Christiansen, Neal, and perhaps Jorgensen, if she were willing to serve. Other thoughts anybody has on that slate of individuals or anybody else that's really interested? I guess I would add that simply not being on the ad hoc committee doesn't necessarily limit a planning commissioner's involvement in this topic. I think most of I think most of the discussion sessions as this goes forward would be open and available and you could attend to kind of monitor what's going on if you so choose. Mr. Neal? Hand up again, off mute.
And I am off mute. I would gladly step aside for Commissioner Jorgensen. And then I would like to recommend you, Chairperson Kogler, to be on the ad hoc committee. So I'm more than happy to step aside for one or the other.
Well, as both of us are also on the housing committee. I, you know, I'm perfectly willing to monitor this. This is a key topic of interest to me, but I'm perfectly content to kind of monitor this from afar if as appropriate. And so I have no problem if Commissioners Neal, Christensen, and Jorgensen would like to step forward. Should Commissioner Jorgensen not wish to do it, I would certainly be glad to take her place if that transpired. How does the commission feel about this discussion?
Chairperson Kogler, I'm truly of the opinion that you would be a far better representative than I. So I will monitor from afar.
Well, we're both fighting for first place or second place in line. I'd be glad to serve if that's the will of the commission. So how do we feel about a, an ad hoc committee that would involve presumably Commissioner Jorgensen, Commissioner Christensen, and myself?
This is Commissioner Gibson. I'm perfectly content with that happening.
I think it sounds great and I would just like to offer, I had my hands, hand up, Mark, that if Roberta couldn't, I would also be a backup. But I do think with Roberta's expertise, we should ask her.
I agree with that completely. I'm sorry I missed your hand. You were actually lighting up when I saw it too, so I should have seen that.
I'm not quite sure how to get rid of it.
Any further comments on this by other commissioners? If not, Warren, I think we've got at least direction on the composition of an ad hoc group, at least to start with, with this. Any other decision points you would need from us tonight?
No, I think that's what we're looking for. So we will do a little bit of work and then we'll probably, I'm guessing these will be virtual meetings to keep it as fast as possible. So we'll then set up a meeting with the ad hoc to report out in terms of kind of what we've discovered. So thank you, this has been very helpful.
Very good. And thank you too, again, you and David for bringing this forward to us because it is a topic of great interest for the community. Okay, we will move off of our discussion item. The next item is item I on our agenda, which is consent calendar. We have development review committee minutes from March 8th through the 29th and then planning commission meetings for March 9th. Are there any comments or changes to those? If not, would there be a motion for approval?
This is Commissioner Gibson. I move approval of the development review committee minutes for March 8th, March 15th, March 22nd, and March 29th, and the planning commission minute for March 9th.
I'll second that motion.
Move a motion and a second from Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion? If not, do we need Warren to call a roll on this or is a voice acclamation okay?
Let's just call a roll.
Okay, very good, please do so.
Commissioner Gibson?
Gibson, aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Cover Rubius?
Aye, sorry, I was muted.
No problem. Chairperson Kogler?
Aye.
That passes six zero.
Okay, the other item is the planning commission minutes for March 9th of 2021. Is there a motion?
Chairman Kogler, this is Commissioner Gibson. I actually made that inclusive of my previous motion.
And that's what I seconded as well.
Very good, that's my oversight. Sorry about that. In that case, we have dispensed with consent items I, III, and IV, which moves us along on the agenda to item number J, other reports. Staff?
Yes, so Housing Constraints Advisory Committee meeting update. The HCOC committee will be meeting this Thursday. It'll be a virtual meeting, 3:00 PM. They are going to be continuing to advise staff and consultants on the zoning code update. They're going to be focused at this next meeting on the potential expansion of the uptown town center specific plan boundaries. This was an issue that was identified by the Housing and Constraints Committee last year as we were doing the housing element. So we're going to be reviewing that issue, taking public input, and hopefully getting some direction on where and if we should be actually adjusting those boundaries. So I think that's an interesting meeting. That's online and virtual. So feel free to listen in on that if you would like.
Very good, thank you. Any other reports by staff? We have the DRC schedule in our packet.
Yeah, so let us know if there's any changes or adjustments that need to be made over the next couple of months on the schedule.
Very good. We'll move to item K on the agenda, planning commissioners' comments. Let's go in reverse order. Well, let's just, we'll go start in the middle and work our way out. Commissioner Christensen, would you like to start this one off, please?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, by all means. Planning commissioners' comments, do you have any you would like to offer?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say that, you know, I wanted to give my congratulations to the staff for the report tonight. I also, again, as I stated before, I'm excited that we're dealing with the railroad street concept sooner rather than later. I think it's going to be essential. Other than that, thank you very much. And I think you did a wonderful job tonight, Mr. Chairperson, I think your second meeting now, so moving along really well, just like a professional. Thank you.
Thanks, actually. The only correction, first flow meeting. So excusing the introductory materials is something I overlooked that I won't do again. And incidentally, Commissioner Cover Rubius, it's interesting to see the top of your head. So your camera's on.
That's funny, just noticed that.
That looks, yeah. Commissioner Neal? Comments?
No comments this evening, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Gibson?
I have no additional comments, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Davis?
No real comments, I just wanted to run something by the commission. I have been attending as the liaison for Main Street and I'm fine continuing to do so. But because they list me as a liaison, I just wanted the endorsement of the planning commission to serve in that capacity. I'm certainly willing to do that.
So I would ask staff, do we need to formalize that?
So we used to formally appoint members to the liaison as liaisons to different committees and groups throughout the community. A couple of years ago, the commission decided that was actually becoming too time consuming and they gave direction that they no longer wanted officially be appointed. So I think currently the status is that it's kind of an informal appointment and it's, you know, any commissioner is kind of free to attend whichever meetings they want. If the commission wanted to go back to more formal appointments, it's definitely within your discretion to do that. We should agendize that if we really want to get into a deeper discussion about that item.
I actually would pick up on that and ask you to follow through with that. And maybe we do put this on an agenda because I think there's value in us reaching out and participating in other commissions and groups within the community. And then more importantly, or equally importantly, bringing that information back to the commission as part of a typical agenda so that information from Main Street or somebody else as appropriate can get channeled back to all of us. Because I certainly don't pick up on all of those things. I don't think everybody else does. So my suggestion would be that we, first of all, recognize Commissioner Davis and then perhaps agendize that. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, the reason I brought it up is Warren, I completely remember that was quite a long conversation about the amount of time commissioners were spending in all these ad hoc committees. But I have voluntarily attended since I've been chairperson. And just because they list me as a liaison, I just wanted to run that by the commission if that's fine to do so. It's totally up to you how you want to proceed with that. Or if they want the chair, that's fine with me too. I just didn't want to be listed on an agenda as a liaison without full disclosure to my fellow commissioners.
Well, I know the commission thanks you wholeheartedly for your service, Commissioner Davis, and probably would like to see you continue. But perhaps we should formalize that if for no other reason. So we all have an understanding of what groups are out there that we potentially should be knowing what they're doing and or interacting with. And I don't have a good set of who all those groups might be within Main Street and the chamber and wherever else it might be in the community. So I think, Warren, at least for discussion purposes, that would be helpful as a future agenda item.
Yeah, let's just agendize that and then we can sort that out.
Sounds good.
That's fine. And one other thing is a question again, will we get an opportunity to meet our interim city manager anytime soon?
Yes, we will. So Greg Carpenter is the interim city manager. Greg was city manager in El Segundo for a number of years. Previous to that, he was a city planner. I think he was the planning director in El Segundo before he became city manager and he worked for a number of years in the city of Long Beach. So he does have a planning background. His first day will be next Monday, the 19th. So yeah, we'll definitely provide an invitation for him to come to a planning commission meeting, introduce himself, and you can ask him whatever questions you want. His role will be limited. It's an interim while we continue the recruitment process for a full-time, permanent city manager. It is expected though that he'll be with the city through the summer.
Thanks, Warren, and that's all I had. Thank you, Chairperson Kogler.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Cover Rubius, any comments you would like to offer?
Darcy, great job tonight and to the staff as well. No other comments.
Very good. Item L is staff comments.
Yeah, so following up on the city manager issue. So Tom Frucci, the retiring city manager, his last day will be this Friday. So we are holding kind of an informal going away event in the parking lot at City Hall. It'll be kind of a social distance kind of event. But if you want to drop by, thank Tom for his years here. That'll be 4:30 this Friday. In terms of project updates, the boys' school reuse project continues to move forward. So the city council has authorized beginning an EIR process. Majestic Realty is the preferred purchaser of the site. They're working with the state right now, basically on an escrow process. We do expect that they will be turning in a formal project description, basically a plan for the project very soon. That will kick off then the notice of preparation, which is the, basically the public notice that we're initiating an EIR process. The next step in that will involve the planning commission. We need to do a public scoping session on an EIR. Our plan is to actually hold that with the planning commission so that the planning commission can hear any public comments that we get from the public on the EIR. It'll also give the planning commission the opportunity to provide any comments that they might have on the project. Following that, we will then report both the public as well as the planning commission's comments to the city council and get the city councils basically kind of their final buy-in on the project before we go into the full technical analysis of the project with the EIR. So we do expect May and June to be fairly busy with the boys' school project, to get that EIR off and running before we get too far into the summer. In terms of the COVID-19 pandemic, probably most of us have heard by now that the governors announced basically a rollback of the blueprint for reopening, which is the four tiers of restrictions, that that will be ending on June 15th. We do expect that after June 15th, there's going to be more opportunities to reopen city facilities. Public meetings potentially can start to reconvene in some form. We don't have specifics yet. We're still looking for guidance from the state and the county in terms of what the rules are. So we don't know exactly what the changes will be yet, but we do expect that within the next two months, there will be some changes as we start to kind of unwind out of this COVID incident. So we'll keep the planning commission posted in terms of any changes to meeting schedules and when it'll be, when we'll start to basically have meetings back in the chamber again. So stay tuned on that. And then in terms of projects in the queue for the planning commission, your next meeting, I think we have a small CUP for some infill residential. Woodlands Apartments, this is a project next to Highlands Church that staff's been working on. We think that's going to be ready in May. And then we are going to be bringing back a report on the zoning code update process to the planning commission in June. Right now, we have a request for proposals out for consultants to prepare the zoning code update. Those are due at the end of this week. So we do expect that we'll hopefully have a consultant ready to work with staff and the planning commission on the zoning code update starting this June. So that'll be another busy project for us to consider during the summer. Some other things going on, Beechwood specific plan that the planning commission approved late last year. They have turned in a series of tentative maps. So they've turned in what we call the large lot map that basically divides it, the property up into the planning areas and reserves the major backbone roads for the project. And then we also have a phase one kind of small lot track map also submitted. So it looks like the Beechwood specific plan is starting to move forward. The Olson-South Chandler specific plan, they do have a grading permit that is basically approved and ready to issue. They are kind of in the marketing phase. They are, need to bring in a master developer basically to do all the backbone infrastructure and grading on the site. So that's what's basically holding up the grading from starting on the project. But they have informed the city that they do think that that master developer, you know, is going to be somebody they'll be able to identify fairly soon. So I think those are the big ones coming in. I think there's a Quickie Car Wash up on 21st and Spring that also has been turned in. So that'll probably be coming to DRC fairly soon. And there's a proposed hotel on 14th and Pine Street that will probably be ready for the DRC here in the next couple of weeks as well. So I think that's the general update I have.
Great, thank you. Lots of big things going on, as you mentioned, Warren, and things that are continuing to go on. I'm sure most of us remember we reviewed the Boys and Girls Club project recently and commented that it was a small project on the other end of the spectrum, but an important and exciting project. And it was great to see in the press in the last couple of days that that project had a groundbreaking is about to move forward. So those little things can add up and make a big difference in the community as well. And so I was very pleased to see that. With that, I think we're done for this evening. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Davis?
Second, Gibson.
Second by Commissioner Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe we're done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Nice job, Mark. Bye, good night, everybody.